Welcome, everybody, to the June 19th Parker Town Council meeting. I'm going to reconvene the meeting at 7:09 PM. Counsel, if you could, please sign in. All council members are present with the exception of Councilman John Dyack. I know we've got some youngsters sitting behind there. If you're under the age of 18, I think we've got, what, three or four of them back there?
We have a scout.
And we've got a scout right in the center. Come on up, guys. Come forward. Kids, come on up. Come right up here. They're like, "But Mom dragged us to this meeting and now we have to come up front?" Yes, come on up. So the four of you are going to lead us in the most important part of our meeting tonight. Audience, if you would, please rise. You guys are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. See, the flag behind us here, so this is how it's going to work. We're going to turn around and face the flag, then it's going to be up to you. And everyone's going to be quiet until you guys start saying the Pledge of Allegiance, then everyone's going to join in. Okay? So the floor is yours.
(Singing) The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys. Way to go. Good job. You guys can go sit down now. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. First up on our agenda, we have special presentations. Jacob, my understanding is you've got a presentation for us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Yeah, as you know, the Parker administers the floodplain in town as a land use authority, and that's to comply with the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968. In 1992, the town opted into the community rating system, which is an optional program to help incentivize communities to give their constituents discounts on flood insurance through higher standards. The town certifies annually that we uphold our standards and our programs, and then every five years, we're visited to verify what rating we receive based on the programs and the standards that we have. The ratings go from nine to one, one being the best. So in 2016, we were visited and a comprehensive review was done of our programs, and it was determined that the town increased from a six to a five, and so that meant flood insurance policies would receive a 25% discount if they're in a Zone Eight. Previously, it was a 20% discount. So just to give you an idea of what that means, there's 52 communities in the state of Colorado that participate in this program, and there's only one better than us. It's Fort Collins, and we share the number-two spot with three other communities, the county of Boulder, the city of Boulder, and the city of Arvada. So with that, I will turn it over to the Flood Management and Insurance Branch Chief for FEMA Region Eight, Mr. Jeff Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. I'm here to congratulate your community tonight for making great progress in your implementation of the National Flood Insurance Program. Congratulations to the Town of Parker for your high commitment to public safety and resiliency. The community rating system was implemented in 1990 as a voluntary program for recognizing and encouraging community floodplain management activities exceeding the minimum standards of the National Flood Insurance Program. Under the CRS, flood insurance premium rates are discounted to reward community actions that meet the three goals of the community rating system. Those goals are to reduce flood damage to insurable property, to strengthen and to support the insurance aspects of the National Flood Insurance Program, and to encourage a comprehensive approach to floodplain management. Approximately 1,400 communities participate nationally in the community rating system program. The Town of Parker has achieved a Class V rating, as Mr. James was indicating. That is a phenomenal rating, so that's something to really be proud about. As a Class V member, policyholders in the special flood hazard area receive a 25% discount on their policies insuring property in that hazard area. That's a great...I don't know. Last time I saved 25%, I was pretty happy. Currently, the NFIP provides about roughly $16.9 million worth of flood insurance coverage in your community, so that's a big amount of property that's being protected or insured. A Class V rating means that your community has sustained fantastic outreach activities, has supported open space initiatives, and has implemented higher regulatory standards and drainage system management. In recognition of this great achievement for the Town of Parker, I would like to present you and your staff as well, the local floodplain administrator, Mr. James, with a plaque recognizing this achievement and the great progress and movement made by the Town of Parker in the implementation of the National Flood Insurance Policy and towards the creation of a stronger and more resilient community. Thank you very much.
All right. Pretty nifty. You guys want to gather in?
Of course.
Actually, why don't you hold it up in front of you? I think Elise is going to take a picture. That's a pretty fancy plaque.
(Inaudible)
Want to stand on chair?
No.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Cool. All right. Thank you very much. Now, next up, we've got Elaine Mariner. Did you want to come forward? Did you have a special presentation tonight as well?
I wish I could. I cannot see anything right now from those flashes, those industrial-strength flashes, so whoever you're pointing at...Oh, Diane, there you go. Truthfully, I couldn't see who was there.
I don't think they can see either because they're sitting in the sun.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks you for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm Diane Roeth, and I chair Parker's Cultural and Scientific Commission, and I am pleased that on your agenda tonight, you'll be hopefully approving our four new commissioners, as well as the resolution to expand our commission. We had such a great response and such great applicants, we just thought it was a good opportunity to go from a nine-member board to an 11-member board. So the two commissioners, new commissioners, that aren't here tonight are Susan Willis...
Thank you.
Ah, look at that. Come on down.
Get up there, Susan. Jeannie, is Jeannie here?
Yes, she is.
We didn't see one. Okay. Well, everybody's here.
There we go.
All right. Jeannie Ring, Justin Rayner, Judy Bazile, and Susan Willis. If you each want to come to the microphone and say, like, two quick things about yourself, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Judy Bazile, and I just wanted to say that I was very happy to be selected, and I'm very much looking forward to being a part of the growth of the arts and sciences in Parker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Rayner, I'm also very, very excited to be part of this group. I have a great appreciation for the arts and science. I'm an engineer by trade, and I'm just really excited to be part of making these opportunities more available to the community. Thank you.
I'm Susan Willis, and I am here. And I was so excited about the...some of the opportunities offered by the Pace Center, including the Shakespeare Festival that was this spring, that I'm excited to be a part of the overall planning for science and culture in Parker.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'm Jeannie Ring. I'm excited to be part of this group and bring science and the arts, whatever I can contribute, networking, or just my background in natural resources, I'm happy to bring that to the Town of Parker.
Awesome. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming up. All right. Next item on our agenda is our Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. I have a feeling that Dennis Houston is still probably trying to recover from Parker Days.
He's here.
Is he here? Oh, look at this. I'm just kidding. I was making a joke. Come on down, Dennis. You're walking a little slow.
I'm here and awake.
Let's talk Parker Days 2018.
We've already been meeting on that.
I have no doubt.
Yes. Let me just hand one thing over.
I will.
I wanted to start out with a big thank you. It was a great celebration weekend with our Parker Days Festival, this being our 40th year for Parker Days, and with that, we had over 1,000 volunteers that helped us pull that off. Most people think behind the scenes of Parker Days, there's this massive organization with, you know, dozens of people. There are five of us in our office, led by Sarah, you know, year-round on Parker Days, and then the rest of us jump in in the last few months leading up to Parker Days. So with that, I just wanted to share, again, thank you for the partnership with the Town of Parker and all of our volunteers. What we had before you is just some historical data of showing the growth on Parker Days over the last five years. Hey, Carol, if I said something down here, can you put me up on the screen?
Can you just zoom in on the chart primarily?
It might be hard to read, but you guys have a hard copy up there, so my apologies to the audience. But when you look at the growth of Parker Days over the last five years, in 2013, our attendance at Parker Days was 125,000 people. That following year, in 2014, it was a...excuse me, 152,000. In 2014, that number jumped up to 185,000. Okay, 2015. Sorry about that. And last year, we hit 211,000. This year, we're excited as we dumped all of our raw data into our formula, we hit 250,000 people in downtown Parker over that three-and-a-half days. And to give you perspective on that, when you look at the seating for a home game for the Broncos, it seats 76,000 people. So we had more than the equivalent of hosting a Broncos home game each of those three-and-a-half days in downtown Parker. So when we hear parking's a challenge, that might explain why parking's a bit of a challenger in Parker Days, because we do have a large crowd. But we're excited. People came from all over the metro, the media in Denver, all of our normal media partners we have with publications, with Parker-area magazines, and with The Chronicle and others. We got the word out, the media in downtown Denver helped us too with some of the TV stations, so we had a very diverse group of people there. A lot of people coming to Parker Days for the first time this year. That photo you have on that handout is just a shot that I took from the stage right before Bret Michaels came onstage. So you might even recognize a few people near the front. One person jumps out in that photo. But anyway, we're excited. We're already looking at Parker Days 2018 and looking at what we can do to always improve and make it better each year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm going to keep it short and brief on the Parker Days update this evening.
Council, questions? Dennis, kudos to your staff.
Just a quick comment. Again, I posted it online, and I love the new layout. I love how it was spread out, and I think it just really got a chance to have people, you know, walk the whole street, and it was...there was something between each destination, I guess is the best way to put it. There was always something to do, no matter where you were. There weren't big blank spots. I thought it was a well-designed layout, and I think that, you know, obviously, there's some people on Facebook behind you that are a little weary of the growth and a little weary when you present numbers like this, but I think the biggest and most important number is at the top of the page, and the economic impact to Parker, and whether that be gas stations or food stores or whatever, and those people spending dollars while they're in town, and that goes to our revenue, and I truly appreciate that effort.
It certainly does. Thank you, Josh. Yeah, I was visiting with two business owners up in Cottonwood just a couple days ago, and they said even just the overflow in the Cottonwood area, which is nowhere near the grounds of Parker Days Festival, but it was one of their bigger weekends they've had for the whole year, so.
Fantastic. Please pass along to your staff the job they do. I mean, we all know that for a week beforehand, they work 24/7 and, you know, have to deal with lots and lots of challenges, so please thank them for all the hard work they put into it.
Certainly.
To tag on with what Josh said is that, obviously, we don't have 250,000 people that are residents or even in our extended areas, so one of the real benefits is the money that it brought in, the revenue that it brought in. So many of those people live someplace else, so they got to spend their money here and go back home where we don't have to service their driveways and their potholes and sidewalks have to be scraped and that sort of thing. So that's a real economic benefit, not just for right now, but continues to grow.
That's very true, yeah. When you look at that $4 million economic impact over those three-and-a-half days, a majority of that came from outside of the immediate Parker area, so it's money that we can spend from others' pocketbooks from outside of the community.
Yes, sir.
So again, thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for you to come up and give comment to the Town Council. There is a three-minute time limit on public comment. You're going to see right above me, there's a little clock up there, and I've got one in the back room as well. When you come up for public comment, state your name and address for the record, and then I'll start the clock. No action will be taken on these items at this time, and these are for items that are not currently on our agenda. So if you're here for an item that is on our agenda, one of our public hearings, there'll be public comment at that time for that specific item. So with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:25 PM if there's anyone here to address council. Come on down. Like I said, just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Gary Adkin. I live at 11945 Meadowwood Lane, which is in Hidden River Two.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I have a summary of what I'd like to discuss with you tonight. If I could hand that to someone.
Sure. Go ahead with your comment, and then we'll grab it from you at the end.
Great. First of all, I just wanted to say that I've been a resident of this lovely town for 16 years, and last year, I had one of the best opportunities of my life to attend the Citizens Academy hosted by the Police Department. It was more than what I could have ever expected, and whenever I have the chance, I encourage any of my friends to sign up and be lucky enough to get selected and attend that awesome event, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor. I recall that you attended one of the evenings and really appreciate it. The issue that I'd like to discuss with you this evening has to do with easements that were granted by the Hidden River Two community in 2014. These easements had to do with trails and storm drainage for an upstream development just south of Hidden River Two. At the time that these easements were granted, there was some confusion over who owned the property. There was even some discussion that it may belong to the town. Actually, up until about two weeks ago, Douglas County Clerk and Recorder's Office showed the property, known as Track Day, as belonging and being owned by the town. In fact, we have found in the last month or so that the property actually belongs to Hidden River Two. The concern that I have, and what I wanted to discuss with you this evening, and I'll be very quick, and hopefully, my summary will cover some of the items if I don't get to them. One of the issues that exists in the Hidden River Two Articles of Incorporation require a vote of the members of the association before the conveyance or encumbrance of any real property. We believe that this vote did not occur by the Hidden River Two Association, and so our concern is what is the status of these easements today? And that's something that we've been trying to discuss with our officials through the HOA, attempting to gain additional information. Fortunately, I've been able to get some information from Mr. Williams here at the Town Correspondence that references some of the things that I'm discussing, and in this package, there's also a letter going back to February of 2014 referencing the potential involvement of the town in these easements.
You can finish. You're fine. Finish your thought. Go ahead.
The last thought is, I would ask the council's permission to discuss these issues and see if we can't come to a resolution of some of the questions that remain open on this question with town staff. And my contact information is included in the letter, including my email.
Perfect. I would say definitely get a copy to this handsome young man in the red tie sitting here. He's our town attorney, Jim Maloney.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, and we'll make sure to have staff reach out to you and get a better picture and then report back to council on that.
I appreciate that.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side for public comment? No? Rhonda, you don't want to...okay. Center section, public comment? Okay? On this side, over here on the right? Mr. Rogers in the back? You want to come down? No? All right. Then we will close public comment at 7:29 PM and move on to the next item, which is reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Debbie, how about you?
Several things. Last Tuesday, I had a business retention meeting at...and it was at 10 o'clock in the morning, so I'm just going to preface that, at Jordan Wine and Spirits. They...Sarah is the owner. She bought that business almost a year ago, the date that Darlene and I were in there. She was happy to say that her business has increased in that 12 months by 6%, and they employ 11 folks there. So she...we gave her every opportunity to say, you know, is there anything that the town could do to help with anything, signage, whatever, and she said absolutely not that everything that she had worked with the town was...had been exemplary, and she had been in retail for 30 years previously, so she kind of knew the ropes, was very pleased. She asked if maybe the property managers, if we had any influence over them, and I said, "Well," what she was talking about, we can't help on that. So also, on Wednesday, along with, I think, almost everyone here, I attended the opening of the Dog Park and Golf Desk Park. That was a very moving experience, needless to say. I'll let Amy talk a little more about it because she cried more than Josh and I, I believe. So that...then on Thursday morning, I attended the Creative District Meeting. They have a lot of things going, a lot of information that was going back and forth. They are doing...looking forward to more collaborative work with the DBA. They're very pleased with what has happened with the Friday Art Walk, and they're going to continue to work towards that. There is thought that some of the...maybe in September, I believe it was, or for certain next spring, for some of the focus for the art, the Friday art, is to involve younger artists, middle school, high schoolers, so that we can focus some attention on them to help encourage them in what their endeavors are. So everyone was very supportive of that. They've got, in their budget, about 18,000. They are really working on their website, and most of the design...you know, they're always tweaking it, but they're getting a lot of feedback via that on what suggestions are, and there are people, individuals in that group that...some of the random acts of art that have worked really well around town and some that haven't, they've taken note of that, i.e. the chalkboard. So that...I think that's all for this week.
Renee?
So most of us on Town Council with a number of other individuals went on a Development Design Standards Tour and Design Charrette. Also went to the Miss Parker Days Pageant, of which Mayor Wade was one of the judges.
Oh, it's a contestant.
We had a Town Council and Directors Dinner that we were all there. Also, Amy and I have been doing Planning Commission interviews. There was the free concert in Discovery Park, Ryan, Chris, and the Rough Cuts, and these concerts will continue at least through the months of June and July, every Thursday night. And then we've had a couple PAR branding meetings, and today, I was able to participate in a qualitative assessment with the Tri-County Health Department. So it's been a busy couple of weeks.
Did you have to wash your hands after that?
Yeah. Before, after.
Before and after.
And sing "Happy Birthday" the whole time.
Josh?
Much of what we attended has already been stated, but I think I'm happiest, obviously, about the Disc Golf Park. It's been five long years in the making, but rightfully so. I will say on the record that we, in our prudence and patience, we gained more property, which created an even better course. It's an outstanding course. I've played a good amount of Colorado, and it's great. I know people are laughing because it's Disc Golf, but the truth is, it's still a fun sport. I've been playing since I was a wee one. It's still a fun sport, and it's a good challenging course. It offers two distinct courses, the front nine and the back nine, and it's only going to get better as we make more and more improvements. So kudos to Parks and Rec staff and community development for putting this deal together. It turned out to be quite an asset to the Town.
Amy?
So I did attend the Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable last week, and that is as exciting as it sounds. We have a lot of people who do come in and voice any complaints. There is a runway that is closed for repair at Centennial, so that had changed some of the air traffic, and anytime you have questions, I've got a great link to go to to voice a complaint. You can always contact me as well. Some of the other things that we're working on those, they really do work closely with all of the pilots at Centennial Airport, staff, just to make sure that anyone flying in or out is really familiar with all of the guidelines to mitigate any noise as much as possible, and we also have traffic, obviously, from Buckley, DIA, and, you know, sometimes even from the Springs, too, as well. But it's a great committee. Ryan is a staff member. He serves as a co-leaison with me on that roundtable, and it's a good group of people from all over the surrounding area. It's actually interesting. I like it. We also...Renee mentioned Planning Commission interviews. Excellent candidates, and I've been doing this for six and a half years, and I'm just overwhelmed every time we throw out a call for applications for any of our commissions. We really do have a great outpouring of really qualified, just interested members from the community, and that always makes me excited that we have people who want to be involved. Part of that also was I was doing the Parker Cultural and Scientific Commission interviews as well, and as you saw this evening, we have four great applicants who have been presented to us. Again, that was a large group, hard to make those decisions, but again, very exciting to see the interest and outpouring support that we get from the community. Debbie mentioned the Dog Park dedication. That is something that was near and dear to my heart. I have worked with World War II vets, all the way up to veterans who have been injured in the war by building homes for a lot of our wounded warriors, and doing a lot of fundraising. So when I attended the funeral for Corporal David M. Sanka, I immediately was thinking of ways that we needed to...and even prior to being on council, I wanted to build a memorial or do something in the town to honor all of our veterans, and so as I attended the funeral for Corporal Sanka, I was already thinking of ideas and fundraising, and how can we get matching donors, things like that. During that funeral, they really emphasized his dedication to training the Special Canines for the Marines. He was a dog lover as a kid. He and his wife had several dogs, and while he was training Afghan soldiers, there was an infiltration. They turned on Corporal Sanka, and his partner shot him, and his dog tried to save his life, and they shot his dog as well. Flex. In the middle of that funeral, at that time, I was thinking back to when Josh and I were running for office in 2009. Three things we repeatedly heard: revitalization of the downtown area, economic development was an important thing, that we needed to bring that back to the Town of Parker, and the number-three most requested item was, "We need a Dog Park in Parker." And so, you know, from 2009, fast-forward to 2013, we had discussions on it. During that funeral, I thought, finally, now I can get some good backing. So when I attended the funeral for Corporal David M. Sanka, I immediately was thinking of ways that we needed to, and even prior to being on council, I wanted to build a memorial or do something in the town to honor all of our veterans. And so as I attended the funeral for Corporal Sanka, I was already thinking of ideas and fundraising and how can we get matching, you know, donors, things like that. During that funeral, they really emphasized his dedication to training the special canines for the Marines. He was a dog lover as a kid. He and his wife had several dogs. And while he was training Afghan soldiers, there was an infiltration. They turned on Corporal Sanka and his partner shot him. And his dog tried to save his life and they shot his dog as well, Flex. In the middle of that funeral, at that time, I was thinking back to when Josh and I were running for office in 2009. Three things we repeatedly heard, revitalization of the downtown area, economic development was an important thing that we needed to bring that back to the town of Parker. And the number three most requested item was, we need a dog park in Parker. And so, you know, from 2009, fast forward to 2013, we had discussions on it. During that funeral, I thought, finally, now I can get some good backing. This will be a great way to not only honor Corporal Sanka, but also to, you know, just give the community another place to gather and also show their appreciation and respect for all of those servicemen and women who serve our country. So that was a great honor. And yes, I do, I did tear up, but that's me. And so I just want to thank all of our Parks and Rec staff. I know we have like Public Works, all kinds of people, marketing, PR. I mean, I think everyone is in the town as a whole, really came together and put their heart and soul into that project. And I want to thank everyone for that. Next.
Josh?
So not to, not to belabor the, the dog park thing, but to Amy's point. And the, the fourth item that she didn't mention was a new library. And so it's one of those things, you, you come on to the council and there's already projects in motion and then some start when you're on and then there'll be projects that continue, you know, and I'll be done with, in, in 18 months and, and there'll be projects continuing. So it's somewhat rare that you actually get to see projects go from start to finish in the time that you sit here, because some of these things take a long time to get done. So it's kind of nice. Those are a few things that we've been able to see, start to finish. The only other item I was going to add is, at our last E470 board meeting, we did with, with the help of some grants, get two different car charging stations put in at, at the E470 building. We have more and more electric vehicles or partially electric vehicles that travel the road. For anybody that's driven on E470, you know, we have, you see the trucks go up and down that can help people change flat tires or people that run out of gas or any of those things. So we've been able to help and support those other drivers. But the one piece of the pie we, we hadn't been able to serve were the folks that rely on electric vehicles. So now we're able to do that and as that, we continue to pursue redevelopment of some of the former toll plazas, whether they would be, you know, fueling stations and things. We already have a commitment that charging stations would go along with those. So just, just another effort to try and make sure, A, that we're servicing all of the drivers on the road, but to try and, you know, as those cleaner vehicles and whatnot become more, more and more popular, more and more prevalent, that, that we're serving those folks as well.
All right. Excellent. Thank you guys very much. Go ahead and move on to the next item, which is item number six. This is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have a consent agenda item removed for further discussion. So council, you have before you consent agenda items 6A through 6Q.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion from Josh Martin and a second from Amy. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is our town administrators' report. Michelle, do you have anything to add to the printed town administrators' report that everyone has?
No, I do not.
All right. And so for those watching at home, if you're ever curious, our town administrators' report is online and it's chock full of great information on the town, on what's going on. So parkeronline.org is a place to find it. All right. Next up, presentation of our CAFR by Clifton Larson Allen LLP. All right, raise your hand if you know what a CAFR is. You accounting types don't.
Staff do not count.
All right. If you have anything to do with accounting, put your hand down. All right, regular civilians, anyone know what a CAFR is? It sounds painful. You're about to learn what a CAFR is. So who's gonna? The man in the suit is holding our CAFR. All right, if you can state your name and address for the record, please, and give a quick explanation of what a CAFR is for, ever since no one in the room knows what, I mean, we know what a CAFR is.
True thing. We'll keep it high level. I'm Kevin Kimball. I've worked with Clifton Larson Allen for three years and I've actually had the fortune of working on this audit with Rhonda and the rest of the team in accounting for three years. This is my third year on the audit. And for those of you who don't know, CAFR stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So each year municipalities, whether it's local government like Towne of Parker, a county, for example, states, they'll have to issue these CAFRs. It's required by government auditing standards and governmental accounting standards. It's pretty big. It's cumbersome. I think theirs is 124 pages. I'd have to look.
Okay. A lot of pages.
Yeah, 140, sorry. 147. So anyways, what we do, obviously, we're, we're engaged to audit the financial statements, the major funds, the government wide statements, the footnotes, and then some of the budgetary schedules that go with it. And so what I'll do is I'll kind of touch on, you know, what our responsibilities are. And then I will, I don't want to hit this microphone, so I'm going to set it down real fast.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Just so you know, where our work goes into this huge document, not all of it gets audited by us and we do not perform work all over it. And so kind of give a high level of what we've done, some of the new things, accounting pronouncements and standards that hit the town this year and that the town had to implement, kind of walk through those, circle back to our opinion, our report, which is, you know, why we're engaged to give you guys that opinion. And then I'll take any questions after that. So within this CAFR, pages 42 through 88 is what our work is performed over. And at a real high level, you'll see it's government wide statements. So that's government wide inclusive of all funds and business type or enterprise funds. And then also within that are separate fund statements. So the government wide disclosures and statements are on a modified accrual basis, which is unique to governmental accounting itself. And then what everybody would understand, looking at regular financial statements, is the full accrual basis, which are all the fund statements, your general fund, public improvements, rec center, the PACE fund, for example, those are some of the major funds that I remember doing work over this year. And so we obviously go through, we apply our audit procedures and then we test the substantive work, those balances to verify the financial statements are clear, concise, complete, and they're supported by the evidence that management gives us during our work. Some of the big things that come along with these financial statements are the footnotes and they're, you can find those starting all the way back on page, I believe they start on page, here we go. 61 is where those start. And so within those footnotes, they outline the governmental, the accounting policies that the town abides by, some of the estimates that they use. And then obviously you go into footnotes, some like pooled cash and investments held by the town. And one of the new pronouncements this year that GASB rolled out is called GASB 72. And at a real high level, it's just the fair value presentation of certain investments. So based off the type of the investment, it has to be leveled and measured with a fair value measurement component based off of the type of the investment it is. And it's pretty well documented. I think it's the first, it's note 4A2. 4A2 is where it's at. And then some of the other footnotes that we go over in depth during our testing, capital assets. Obviously, the town is managing a wide variety of assets. We've performed quite a bit of work over that. Long-term debt, any bonds, et cetera. Obviously, the net pension disclosure, which was new, I think, two years ago, and I'm sure Paul Needham Miller was in here a couple of years ago going through that with you guys. The town actually does have a net pension asset with, with FPPA, which is somewhat of a rarity comparing that across local municipalities throughout Colorado. And the other new pronouncement this year is GASB 77. And just so you, everybody knows, GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They issue all the pronouncements. They're kind of the hierarchy when it comes to governmental accounting standards. So that, GASB 77 relates to tax abatement disclosures. And essentially, it requires that the town provide clear, concise information about any tax abatements given to the public or, you know, to certain entities. And I think that can be found back in footnote, I believe it's footnote 5C, if I remember correctly. I spent plenty of time flipping my way through these statements over the past few months. Yes, we've got all the way back or in 5C. And then it explains the new pronouncements in the last footnote, footnote 6. So like I said, there's all the statements, the disclosures, we've performed our work. And the big thing that you guys want to hear, the opinion, the report. So no different than in years past, we were able to issue a clean, unmodified opinion, which, you know, is the highest, highest standard of opinion that we can offer. So essentially, all that, the, really what that means is the town's financials are fair, they're clear, concise, and they fairly represent in all material aspects the balances that are shown in these statements. And our work didn't see anything to lead us otherwise. You know, some of the other items that'll be outlined in our independent auditor's report are, you know, some of the other matters. And the other matters relate to the required supplementary, supplementary information. This is budget to actuals for all the different funds. Any budget adjustments that you guys or new ordinances issue throughout the year, how it relates to what the actual data is at year end. Those items are reviewed, but they are not, we do not give and issue an opinion on those items. The opinion comes on the footnotes, the government wide and all the major funds. You know, just to kind of circle back, you know, each year that I've been here, the town and the staff that we've worked with has been great. The audit's always gone real well. I know that they probably get tired of us asking for a lot of questions and support, but they've always been great to work with. And so I think that, you know, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, so the town and other local municipalities, they can get financial accounting excellence in reporting. It's an award that gets issued if your CAFR is clear, concise. You know, your budgetary schedules, which is outside some of the stuff that we audit, you know, is clear and concise to the readers. And I think as of last year, Towne of Parker had 27 consecutive years and I don't see a reason why this couldn't be the 28th. Do I have my numbers right? All right, perfect.
So you said 27 years?
27 consecutive years.
So Rhonda was two when the first one got issued? Is that correct?
I'll leave that answer to her.
I just want to make sure we were clear.
And so, I mean, to sum it up, you know, we've issued the opinion and a part of, you know, we issue so many different deliverables, you know, we have letters to governance, which is obviously you guys. We have different letters to management with some recommendations. And, you know, one of the deliverables that we're giving you guys this year is some of the internal controls, the suggestions. It's an internal control management letter. It's issued to the town council. And essentially what those summarize is there are some areas that we find, you know, where we think internal controls can be enhanced, you know, over certain areas based off of some of the work that we got into with the town's accounting department. And so I think with that, if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? No? And everyone in the audience now knows what a CAFR is.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item up on our agenda is item number nine. These are our public hearings. So first off is item 9A. This is a public hearing for ordinance number 1.493.4 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2017 revised budget for the Town of Parker and to make appropriations for the same. And Rhonda, you are going to lead us through tonight.
Yes, I'd also like to add the CAFR is online.
Okay.
If anyone would like to see it.
Wonderful.
It's on the finance page or you can just type www.parkeronline.org/2016cafr. So, okay.
Wonderful.
Onto the budget revision. Seems loud. The purpose of this budget revision is to appropriate additional funds for 2017. The total supplemental appropriation for 2017 is $1,274,111 of expenditures, offset by $376,332 of revenue, for a net increase of expenditures of $897,779. The expenditures include $319,154 in the general fund, $75,000 in the Parks and Recreation Fund, $117,125 in the cultural fund, $340,000 in the recreation fund, $152,832 in the capital improvement fund, $215,000 in the stormwater fund, and $55,000 in the fleet fund. So this is the expenditures. And to offset some of those expenditures, we have added to the budget request $30,000 in the Parks and Recreation Fund, $40,000 in the recreation fund, $91,332 in the capital improvement fund, and $215,000 in the stormwater fund. And the details can be found in exhibit A, which is attached to the ordinance. And staff recommends to approve the budget supplemental request.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Rhonda?
Majority of this is FTEs, is.
All of them. No, just kidding. Two FTEs will be added or requested to be added.
That's personnel, just for those.
Full-time.
Well, yeah. For those, for those.
Full-time equivalent.
For those watching who aren't into acronyms as much.
And let me get to where they are. There's one in, as a legal administrator in the legal department, and then one crime scene technician investigator, level three.
Other questions, council?
And that, quickly, that CSI position is the one we, we share with Lone Tree as well? Or is that one separate from?
Yeah, the department as a whole does work for Lone Tree.
Okay. Other questions?
The CSI department, not the PD, oh, parts of the PD, sorry.
All righty. Well, thank you very much, Rhonda. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:53 PM if there's anyone here wishing to address council. All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:53 PM and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.493.4 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item 9B. This is a.
Next, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda. This is a public hearing for Cottonwood Highlands filing 2C, final plat. And Stacy, you're going to lead the show.
Thank you, mayor and council. So this is the Cottonwood Highlands filing number 2C. It's a final plat. The property, or this is a project that creates 76 single-family residential lots and five open space tracts. It's on 18.9 acres. The development is located at the northeast corner of Chambers Road and Cottonwood Drive. So a little bit of background on this property is this property is part of the overall Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development. So the whole Cottonwood Highlands is in between Chambers and Jordan north of E470. The property in question tonight is highlighted there in blue. In addition, this will complete the single-family development that will be north of Cottonwood Drive. So this will finish off all the single-family development identified within the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development. The portion tonight, the filing 2C, is again highlighted in blue for your reference. So the final plat proposed tonight meets the requirements outlined within the Cottonwood Highlands Plan Development, as well as meets all requirements and conditions that were outlined within the Cottonwood Highlands filing 2 sketch and preliminary plan. So the proposed plat also includes a request to vacate a portion of right-of-way. That area of right-of-way that's being requested to be vacated is highlighted in red on the map before you. The proposed right-of-way was dedicated in 2004 as an access point from Cottonwood Drive. The access is being relocated to the east, which is highlighted in yellow on this map, to meet minimum spacing requirements and also to line up with the access to the south. So based on the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance, the vacation of right-of-way, which has not been constructed, requires approval by town council. In addition, the town has been added as a signatory to the plat. So the final plat meets all requirements outlined within the land development ordinance and therefore staff recommends that town council approve the Cottonwood Highlands filing number 2C, final plat. This concludes the staff report, but I'm available for any questions you may have.
Council, questions for Stacy? Only question I have is, is this, I know there was some talk by some of the, some of the county neighbors who are just north of this, who, when this development started moving along, were having concerns about people cutting through the county property up there. Does this then build out Cottonwood all the way across from Jordan to Chambers?
Yes. So with filing 2B, which is that portion of the property that's located directly to the east, that development will actually build the north half of Cottonwood Drive all the way from Chambers to Jordan. So that'll be completed and then this will just finalize everything else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. No other questions? Then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at 7:56 PM if there's anyone here to address council on this item. Come on down. Same rules as earlier, name and address for the record and then I'll hit the clock and you can see the timer kind of right above me there.
Good afternoon. My name's Rick Holt. I'm with Site Dynamics Incorporated.
I'm sorry, could you say the name one more time?
My name's Rick Holt with Site Dynamics Incorporated. Address 15545 Carap Circle, Parker, Ada 134. I'm a consultant and I'm representing Lennar, Colorado, tonight and I have nothing to add. I just am saying I'm here for, available for any kind of questions that you might have.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for public comment? Sir, come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Yep. Doug 40. I live at 8527 Dove Ridge Way. I appreciate it, Mike, that you, Mr. Mayor, that you brought up the situation with Cottonwood Drive going all the way through. I basically live at the main intersection in the Dove Ridge development that I have traffic going all the way through like crazy. I appreciate the timing. I would like to know when is it supposed to be completed so we can actually use that road or other neighbors or other people in the area could use it? I do really.
You're going to hot lap it just for kicks, aren't you?
And it, I just, and the best thing so far is a lot of the traffic has slowed down just because of the bridge being worked on. So we, no one wants to go through there because everything's slowing down right there. So that's a good plus for that. So I just wanted to make sure that's going to be done. And then also if, and I don't know if it's Lennar or someone else, but there is a lot of construction loaders, backhoes, driving through the neighborhood when they still have access to that full area, even though they own both the area down on Chambers. So I do see some tractors still coming through the area, you know. So I just want to make sure that was aware of Lennar so they can kind of watch that stuff. Because it's, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood and some of those kids do not see tractors coming through beside the car. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else for public comment on this item? All right, anyone else for public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at seven fifty-nine PM. Stacy, so first question, what's a good estimate of when the construction will be completed on?
So, the north half of Cottonwood Drive, which is gonna be two lanes on the north side of Cottonwood Drive, are currently starting under construction, it's gonna take approximately about four months to be completed and done.
I'm not gonna lie, the other day I was trying to get across, because I was running late for something over by Rocky Vista, and I thought, oh, is the road, is it done yet? Is it done? And I pulled on there, and it wasn't done, and I had to, you know, drive in and do the turnaround, so, I'm glad that, but I didn't go up to the county, so you don't have to worry, I went back down and, down on the road.
And you, you wouldn't want to take that Jeep cross-country.
Oh, I was tempted, I was really tempted to just say, will anyone notice a blue Jeep just taking it four-wheel across there?
Yes.
Unfortunately, someone would notice, and I'm.
So, Stacy, just for clarification, we're gonna open two lanes, and then as development goes, we'll open four lanes, or open the other two, for a four-lane total road.
Right, so as development occurs on the south side of Cottonwood Drive, they will start constructing the south half, including the median on that road, so that'll be done as development occurs.
And if you could, by request of Mr. Forte, reach out to the, to the builder, and just remind them of where their construction equipment is allowed to go in and not allowed to go in.
Will do.
All right, thank you very much. All right, counsel, I'll open it up for further discussion or a motion, please.
Move to approve based upon staff findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh Martin and a second by Debbie, counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item nine C, this is a public hearing for Dransfeld Place Minor Development Amendment Lot One, or Number One, Lot Two A, and Ryan, you're gonna roll this one.
If the computer works. There we go. You were gonna have to like, method act it if it wasn't gonna.
All right, thank you, mayor, and good evening, council members, this is the Dransfeld Place Lot Two A, used by special review, application that we're hearing this evening, the applicant's from J.D. Steel, Cindy and Alan Harding are present this evening, and they have a quick presentation after mine. So, the parcel shown in yellow is generally located on the southwest corner of Apache Drive and Dransfeld Road, this is within the newly-created Dransfeld Minor Development. To the north is Dransfeld Place PD, it's both vacant and being developed at this time. Actually, to the north, to the east, and to the west is all Dransfeld Place PD, and it's being developed and undeveloped at this time. To the south is Clark Farms PD, and Oral Labs Drug and Cosmetic Light Manufacturing is located there right now. So, all of those existing uses and uses that are being built on there and constructed are light industrial in character. The applicant, J.D. Steel, is requesting a use-by-special-review approval to allow a light industrial manufacturing use in, within this development. So, J.D. Steel is a construction firm that installs concrete reinforcing rebar at development sites in Colorado and surrounding states. According to the applicant, the vast majority, ninety-nine percent of J.D. Steel's work occurs off-premises at construction sites, with a limited amount of work occurring onsite for pre-assembly of rebar. That pre-assembly of rebar will occur in the proposed yard area, surrounded by a solid eight-foot-high wood fence, as I'll show in the next slide, and rebar pre-assembly consists of J.D. Steel employees using hand tools to cut and bend rebar components, so there's no heavy machinery or loud equipment being used to do that. The Dransfeld Place PD allows light manufacturing and assembly uses as a use-by-special-review, with use-by-special-review approval, excuse me. So, here is the conceptual site plan that was submitted with the use-by-special-review, you could see it depicts an office warehouse shown in blue and yellow on this slide, a rebar pre-assembly yard, and shown in red, and as accessory storage, and as far as business operations, J.D. Steel will have five employees at the subject property, hours of operation will be seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. You could see it also depicts significant landscape buffers around, it'll be an eight-foot-high security fence in that pre-assembly yard and temporary storage area, and J.D. Steel has deferred site plan submittal with this use-by-special-review, that's applicant-dependent a lot of times, sometimes they submit it concurrently, in this case, they're waiting till they get use-by-special-review approval to submit a site plan for this one. So, the town master plan identifies the area where this subject parcel is located as light industrial, and it supports this type of use. On June eighth, 2017, planning commission recommended that the council, by a vote of five to zero, recommend approve this application, and staff finds that all nine use-by-special-review criteria have been met with this application, and is recommending that the town council approve this use-by-special-review application with the conditions as listed in our report. So, that concludes my application, at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions, thank you.
You guys have any questions for Ryan?
So, Ryan, basically, if that five percent of their business, which is the pre-assembly, wasn't there, this, this would be a use by, right?
Five percent of the what, I'm sorry?
I, I thought you said that the pre-assembly was roughly five percent of that occurred onsite, ninety-five percent occurred on, so if that, if none of that was occurring onsite, I mean, that, that's really the, the hair that's being split here.
Right, more or less, yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
I think the applicant's gonna.
Yeah, before we bring the applicant up, do you guys have any other questions?
Not at this time, nope.
Nope? All right, Cindy and Alan. Come on down. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, mayor and council members, Cindy and Alan Harding, same address, two-five-three-three Chesterfield Road in Castle Rock, eight oh one oh nine.
Oh, we don't use the C-word in Parker.
We heard that at the planning commission.
Say that southern area.
Yeah, that place over there. Very quickly, we are almost a fifty-year-old company, started in Phoenix, Arizona, we are an ESOP company, so we're employee-owned. We do rebar installation everywhere in the United States, so, we have five regional offices, including Alaska, where we also fabricate, we don't fabricate here. You can go ahead, we're gonna go through this really quick.
Okay.
Alan and I have been here since 2012, I run the administrative side, Alan runs everything, and I talk more than he does.
We, we know you run everything.
Yeah.
We, we know how this game works, so.
Okay, well, we like to make him feel that way. Anyway, we, we, at this time, as you know, we work, we live in Castle Rock, as stated, we right now are in as north Denver as you can get, so, we are trying to shorten our commute a lot, and we, a lot of our foremen live down here, and, and actually in Colorado Springs, so it's just a really great move for our company to be able to move, relocate into this area. We, we have forty to seventy guys out in the field all the time, have five of us in the office there, that will be in the office in Parker, the guys going back and forth. Most people don't know what we do, this is what we do, we tie, those things are rebar columns or caissons, so they either go, those are caissons, they go in the ground, grab big holes and put them in the ground, so, we're doing Highlands Ranch Hospital right now, just put three hundred of them in the ground. Those are columns, I think.
They're columns.
See, he does rebar. And this is, I just wanted a picture, so that when you knew, when we said, just extra storage, sometimes it'll be outside, this is how rebar is stored, it is exceptionally heavy, it's never above a couple of feet, you can't store, well, we don't store it above that. This is pre-tieing, so that's just so that you can see that everything that our guys do, they do with their hands, we don't make noise, well, okay, they talk a lot, and yell at each other a lot, but besides that, and then the next one, again, we do, they use tools, we, it's still done that way, so, and the last one is what it looks like when we go to the job, that's what we do.
Nice.
So, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? I think most of us have had some experience with rebar at least some point, go for it.
Where's your largest fabrication location?
That our company owns, or that we, that brings into us, that we put together?
Either or both.
You only own one fabrication shop, and it's in Alaska, and we.
Well, you could get one a little closer, huh?
I know.
Locally, the, the fabricators are CMC Rebar, Harris Rebar, Dalco Steel, they're, they're mostly up north Commerce City area.
Okay.
So, they, they fabricate, they bend it, they cut it, bend it, ship it to us, and we put it together, so it looks like that.
And I really like the landscaping.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll be pretty.
I think that's, that's my, my comment, and kudos on landscaping, I think that's above and beyond, it's gonna be a nice buffer, but again, perfect use of the industrial area, and I am, I am so glad that, sorry to our neighbors to the north, but I'm glad you're coming down.
Thank you.
And it's, honestly, we are, in the five years I've been here, we've pre-tied stuff in our yard twice.
Doesn't happen very often.
For a period of about five days.
We make money when it gets to a job site and gets in the ground, or, yep.
Other questions, guys? No? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Since it's a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at eight oh nine PM, if there's anyone here wishing to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight oh nine PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve the Dransfeld Place Minor Development Amendment Number One, Lot Two A, used by special review based upon staff findings, with the ten conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Amy, counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, item number ten, this is ordinance number one dot four-nine-nine on second reading, this is a bill for an ordinance approving the contract to buy and sell real estate, buy-in between CP two dot five-five-four LLC and the Town of Parker. Mr. Hudson, you're going to lead us.
Good evening, mayor and counsel, Carol, could you turn on the document camera, please? Tonight, in front of you, you have a ordinance to approve a contract to purchase a small parcel of right-of-way at the northeast corner of Cottonwood Drive, and what is the future extension known as Kings Point Way, this is the eastern access into Costco, and also the entrance into Boondocks as well. The, on November twenty-first of last year, you approved an intent to acquire ordinance for six hundred and sixty square feet, of which at the time was about two-thirds right-of-way and, or, excuse me, one-third right-of-way and two-thirds easement, we negotiated with the property owner, a lot of the negotiations were actually done by the town's special council on this, Corey Hoffman, and we negotiated, the property owner actually wanted the easement converted to fee, they agreed upon values, twenty thousand dollars, and it's consistent with a recent property transaction in this area by the Kings Point Metropolitan District. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have, but the total transactions for six hundred and sixty-two square feet.
Counsel, any questions for Chris?
I wish I had, two hundred, six hundred and sixty-two square feet in the right spot.
No questions?
No.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment at eight eleven PM, if there's anyone here to address counsel on this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight eleven PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number one point four-nine-nine on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Josh Rivero and a second by Renee, counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before counsel, we will recess at eight eleven PM.
Can I have one more item? I'm sorry, can I speak to something real quick? Can you speak to something, should I hit your microphone to turn your microphone? Yeah, sorry. I didn't get a chance in the other room, I just, I didn't actually, it's for, it's for Chris. Something came up to me, and something was proposed to me, there's been a rash lately of people driving vehicles down places they shouldn't go, and there's exposure at the farmer's market, and I'm wondering if we could look at movable bollards, or we could at least price something out, where we could put that up if there's an event, and I don't know if there's a, you know, second to that on, on, on counsel, or even, you know, parking a snow truck there, or Jersey barriers temporarily, I just, I just, with all of this starting to team up, I, I just wonder if it's something we should look at, or if it's something we can, we can think about, is we use that area for a, an event area, if there's any way to protect the pedestrians, right now, it's unfortunately a straight shot, I mean, even if it was an accident, somebody just goes straight through, there's citizens right there.
Josh, would you say one more time, where, what?
On the, for example, on the farmer's market, or any time that we turn people onto Victorian, and there's people standing on Main Street, somebody might not turn onto Victorian and go into the crowd, and right now, the only thing in front of them is a big yellow piece of wood that says, don't turn, or don't go straight, I'm just wondering if we can do something that's a little more safe to the citizens.
We can look into it, but one of the problems we have with an open society is, you can't protect against everything.
No, absolutely not, no, absolutely.
And, we can look into what some other options are, but everything takes time and money.
By all means.
And, I mean, we can look into options, that's all I can tell you at this time, without thinking about it further.
If you could put, just put it on the, the agenda to look at some items.
I, I do apologize.
He's asking, because he's gonna.
My, my time is short, and, and I'm, I'm going on vacation, sorry, not that way.
Shorten that sense.
I'm going on vacation, and it came up, and I forgot to ask about it in study, and I just wanted to get it out there before I, before I take off, so, thank you.
All right.[1773.62]